The reports of my death have been greatly exaggerated. Brandon Lewis here with the Ten Con Big Seven Weekend Update. Listen, last week I was laid low by some sort of illness, as was my family. However, because I am too mean to die, I have recovered. Now, there were lots of prayers, lots of prayers went up in Tennessee. Most were from Rhinos and Democrats, hoping that I would not recover. But the rest, the vast majority, were from conservatives like you who actually pay attention to politics and policy in Tennessee, who were rooting for me, and I do thank you. We have got stories about the Tennessee Senate and House stalemate and how it was finally broken. Tempers flaring at the special session, of course. We're going to talk a little bit about House leadership loses its decision to censor people, which the old House, old Cameron Sexton loves to shut people up, loves to censor people. Randy McNally is in that camp as well. They don't want folks knowing the truth, and they don't want people who are upset with their job performance to have any sort of platform, so they often try censorship, we'll talk about that. Drag shows for minors are illegal in all counties but Shelby, so why do blunt and severe counties have some coming down the pike? We're going to talk a little bit about our upcoming Conservative Candidates Academy, and I would recommend you go to ConservativeCandidatesAcademy.com and download that puppy. We're going to look at the anti-drag law ruling appeal and see how that's going. Johnson City Medical Group denies medical treatment to the unvaccinated. We're going to continue our series of how the unvaccinated in Tennessee are discriminated against. Tennessee GOP leadership, recent history of censoring citizens, we're going to cover quite a bit of that. And then finally, we're going to look at a couple of additional stories that you might find interesting. All right, guys, let's get right into it, but first, wait, wait, wait. Do follow us on Gab, Getter, Truth, MeWe, X, Rumble, the places that we have not been censored. Do look for Tennessee Conservative News at Twitter especially, retweet what we have out there, share it, and comment on it. Do go and look at TennesseeConservativeNews.com. Hit that, hit that beautiful subscribe button so you can get our e-newsletter that we send out five times a week, plus our additional email for the Ten Con Big Seven podcast. And do, if you're listening to this podcast, please pause it, give us a five-star review. It really helps other people find us. And you can always text NEWS, N E W S, to four two three two oh five fifty six hundred. That is NEWS, N E W S, to four two three two oh five fifty six hundred. And that will also opt you in for the mailbag, not the mailbag, opt you in for the newsletter. Speaking of the mailbag, thank you, guys, for sending in checks to P O Box six two five, Signal Mountain, Tennessee, three seven three seven seven, because it keeps us afloat. And quite a few checks came in. Checked the mail yesterday, you know, I won't say quite a few, six or seven. For us, six or seven is a lot, and so we will take them every week. And thank you for those of you who are recurring donors, without you, we couldn't do it. Here is a note, Dear Brandon, thank you for all you do. I know the, the move was a great task, because we will be undertaking the move next year when we move permanently to Tennessee. We will keep you posted. I do hope you like your new office, Patricia. And now we have, that came in the mailbag, the old snail mail. And I think I have some other mail over here, hold on a second, hold on a second, can you just talk amongst yourselves? I forgot this one, guys, just hold on, bear with me. I also have a letter here, I can't read all of this, sometimes people write me very long letters. Dear, Dear Brandon, and this is from Billy. I truly do appreciate your concerted efforts to keep commitment to truth in informing the people of Tennessee on current events and legislation concerns. I have enclosed a donation as an encouragement to continue your fine journalistic work to enable we, the people, to be aware of what's going on in Tennessee. Furthermore, I have sent you a book entitled The Great We Set, which I hope you can find time to read. And she goes on to talk a little bit about that book. Okay, I can't read the whole thing to you, but thank you for the ladies and the gentlemen who send us support in the mail and who also send us various words of encouragement. Now, if you have not downloaded, we're about to get into the news stories, I'm sorry. If you've not downloaded this Rhino Report, you are crazy as a loon, and I'll tell you why. I just had somebody that I respect and care about quite a bit send me a text message that says, "I just got around, I just got around reading the Rhino Report and said it's awesome. It's exactly what we need here in Tennessee to get the truth out in a way that is easy, keep up the good work." And so we get great feedback from the Rhino Report, so do share that around rhino report dot net, R I N O report dot net, get yo own copy. All right, let's get right into it. Tennessee Senate and House stalemate broken, special session officially adjourned. On the sixth day of the Tennessee Special Session for Public Safety, the Senate concurred with several amendments made by the House to bills that already passed and officially adjourned until January. The Senate held its ground and only passed four bills. Senate Bill seven oh eight five having to do with tax relief for gun safes, I'll take that. SB seven oh eight six having to do with a shortened reporting time for reporting from courts to the TBI. Okay. SB seven zero eight eight having to do with annual reporting on human trafficking, which is kind of a weird bill, because the bill that was going to report for human trafficking, and I don't know how the last one came out, it was just a bill that was supposed to go to like the Lieutenant Governor and the Governor and the Speaker of the House. I'm like, well, if you're going to go to the trouble to make that report, shouldn't we make that thing public? I don't know, and it looked like it was even amended down just to come to the Lieutenant Governor at some point. I don't know if that language ultimately got changed, maybe somebody in the comments can let me know. And then another one, SB seven oh eight nine, which is a budget appropriations bill. Sources inside the Capitol tell us that the Senate did not consider a controversial bill on the ceiling of the autopsy records of minors, because Senator Todd Gardenhire informed Senate Speaker Randy McNally that the bill would have opened up sections of the Tennessee Code that would have made it necessary for the bill to be passed in the Senate Judiciary Committee. Gardenhire, being chairman of that committee, refused to reopen it, to reconsider the bill. I'll tell you what, Todd, Todd is kind of, you know, we got after him hard and heavy, because he's never met an illegal immigrant that he didn't love and did not want to come from another state and live in hours or another country. But, and he was terrible in school choice, but he has been moving in a school choice direction, and he has also refused to open up the Judiciary Committee twice, once in the original session and once in this one, because people don't want this shenanigans and this BS. So sources tell us this is what ended the stalemate between the House and the Senate. The session ended with an expense of over three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to bring lawmakers to the Capitol for six days to get four bills passed. Somebody tell me what the emergency was that required this special session, I will wait. There was not one, and just as Bill Lee abused his emergency powers during the pandemic, he was doing it again here. And what in the world, what kind of major improvement is going to happen from a report on human trafficking, that was not an emergency to begin with? A budget appropriations bill taking off taxes for gun safes and making sure that the court supported the TBI a little earlier? We could not have done that in a regular session in January? However, those expenses of three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars are not all encompassing and do not address additional security or legal fees associated with the session. Next story, tempers flare. Tempers flare as special session on public safety is adjourned in the Tennessee House. Next story. After the Tennessee Senate concurred with changes that the House made to four bills, there was no further business for the lower chamber to consider. John Harris, Executive Director of the Tennessee Firearms Association, warns that numerous gun control measures were proposed by both Republican and Democrat legislators. We can certainly expect that many of these will arise again before the vote to end special session was taken. Representative Justin Jones asked the clerk if a vote of no confidence could be taken on Speaker Cameron Sexton. Jones was disciplined on Monday after having been ruled out of order twice by the Speaker and under new House rules that were implemented at the start of the special session. I wonder what the new House rules were, if it had anything to do with Cameron Sexton, it's probably shutting people up. He doesn't, he wants, he wants to do all the backroom deals, get everything assigned, let it go through committee, and never have any input from the public or people he doesn't like from either side of the aisle. Shouting could be heard from the gallery, it says Sexton proceeded with the vote to adjourn, making any action to question his leadership impossible. Once adjourned, a physical and verbal altercation took place between Sexton and Representative Justin Pearson. The pair collided as Sexton sought to make his way out of the chamber, while Jones and Pearson held up signs in close proximity to his face. Both Sexton and Pearson accused each other of being dense together. Other lawmakers stepped in to separate the two of them. I looked at that video, I don't know, I mean, it looked like he lowered his shoulder and just hit it. I think that's exactly what he did. I think he was frustrated with the guy being in his face, and I don't necessarily blame him. But Sexton brought all this on himself, as did McNally. They could have gavelled this thing out and been done with it, but instead, they created the opportunity, as Rhinos, for Democrats and the media to make fools of them, and they did it in spades, buddy. They did it in spades at the state and the national level. It was a success, it was a tremendous Democrat and left-leaning media success, the special session was. Pearson is considering filing assault charges while Sexton maintains he was just trying to avoid a cameraman for in-depth and truthful reporting. Just keep following us here at Tennessee Conservative News. Now, guys, do go to the Mill Creek View Podcast, make sure you put in Tennessee, Mill, M I L L, Creek View Podcast, Tennessee, put Tennessee in there. My friend Steve Abramowitz is doing a great job. He recently did a great interview with Gary Humble of Tennessee Stans, Phil Johnson of Grace to You Radio Show, the executive producer there, so be sure to check those out. And if you're interested in getting caught up with Florida, Mill Creek View has a podcast hosted by Kat Stansel. If you're interested in Washington State, they have a podcast hosted by Vincent Cavallari. Okay, so those are all good reasons to listen, and you tune into Steve, because Steve also has his CEO special that is out and can be viewed on YouTube, Rumble, Instagram, anywhere you listen to your podcasts, a new episode comes out every Monday at nine AM, and Steve is talking to great American business owners. But the reason that we all love Steve, let's just be honest, is because he covers what's going on in Tennessee and the newsmakers, so you need to be listening to Steve because he is a true blue Tennessee patriot. So Mill Creek View Tennessee, look that up anywhere you get your podcasts and give him a big old thumbs up and a good review. All right, guys, next story. Tennessee House Leadership Loses Decision on Sign Bans. We're going to get into the censorship-loving nature of our Rhino leadership toward the end of the Big Seven today, but we'll just give you a little foretaste here, here we go. Davidson County Chancery Court Judge Anne Martin has ruled that the holding of small signs in the House of Representatives galleries and committee meeting rooms is likely protected by the First Amendment, keeping in place a temporary restraining order allowing members of the public to carry signs. Martin wrote, quote, "Although the court appreciates the General Assembly's desire to maintain decorum and prevent disruptions on its proceedings, the court cannot conclude that the rule banning signs is reasonable in light of the purpose it could legitimately serve. The rule of banning signs is so broad, it encompasses behavior that is not disruptive, as it is, as is the case here," she said. The decision means members of the public could carry signs in the House during the course of the special session, pending a full court hearing by the case brought by ACLU of Tennessee. I can't believe the ACLU is actually still serving some sort of free speech purpose. I'm amazed that they, that they even engage in free speech. I thought that they would exclusively and only want you to be shut up, because they, they're very, they're very, ACLU is very wiggly, very wiggly. Sometimes they'll fight, you know, for free speech, and sometimes they'll fight for censorship. It just depends on where it is on the political spectrum. The House approved new laws Monday. Bard signed in the House galleries and the committees. The rules were created during a private ad hoc committee meeting in House Speaker Cameron Sexton's conference room. That's the place that all good, good faith, open, honest discussions need to happen, are in closed-door meetings that the, the public is not made aware of in Cameron Sexton's conference room. That was not listed on the formal House schedule and included no members of the media or public, contrary to the General Assembly open meeting rules. Rules for thee, but not for me, says Mr. Sexton. The following day, three women holding small signs on eight and a half by eleven pieces of paper were rejected from the House Committee Meeting. On Wednesday, three women represented by the ACLU filed suit alleging the rule violated their right to free speech. These Rhinos don't give a rip about free speech, as we will soon discover. Martin issued a temporary injunction the same day, temporarily blocking a ban on signs. Next story. Drag shows for minors are illegal in all Tennessee counties but Shelby, so why are blunt and severe counties allowing it? Because Rhinos often pass these bills that look really good so they can grab headlines, but then the enforcement of, of these rules by our government is virtually nonexistent. Despite guidance from AG Skamity's office and clarification from one of the sponsors of legislation, banning drag shows for children may be present, it seems there will be illegal drag performances carried out on September second, that's tomorrow, if you're listening to this as I record it, and at least to Tennessee counties. In Sevierville, there will be an event called Queer and Severe Variety Show. The event details indicate that the show is free to all ages or welcome. The event takes place at Severe Civic Center, which is owned and operated by the city of Sevierville. Interesting, or as the legislation defines it, a public place. Additionally, as demonstrated with the EventBrite ticket to reserve your seat, it indicates that it is an all-ages-free show. The fact that this event is held on public property and features male and female impersonators with an invite for anyone, including minors, indicates that this event violates Tennessee law. Grassroots organizations who represent Sevier County were told when they spoke to Mayor Robert Fox's office about the event that Mayor's office was not able to stop it because it had concerns about a lawsuit. Well, when would you not have concerns about a lawsuit? The Mayor's Office referred to the Shelby, to the Shelby County ruling, which doesn't affect Sevier County. This is typical government incompetence, just not wanting to, to act or assert themselves. In Blunt County, Blunt County Pride will take place the same day, September second, as Clayton Center for the Arts, which is on the campus of Maryville College. While Maryville College is a private school, Blunt County Pride has not only included drag as part of their festival entertainment, but it appears to be something of a central feature, as evidenced by the schedule in the graphic Tennessee Code states, quote, "An adult-oriented establishment or adult cabaret shall not locate within one thousand feet of, of a childcare facility, a private, public or charter school, a public park, family recreation center, a residence, or a place of worship." According to Google Maps, First Christian Church is about four hundred feet from the college. It would seem that despite the law being put into place for ninety-five, ninety-four, ninety-five counties in Tennessee, there are at least two counties that do not have the willingness to enforce the law that's tested. They will choose to remain silent about it, we'll see what happens. Who knows? Guys, listen, I've been, we're only about three weeks away from the Conservative Candidates Training sponsored by the Conservative Candidates Academy, advertising here on the Tennessee Conservative. Both are for-profit organizations, practicing our free speech rights as long as we can. So if you're going to run for office, you need to show up to this thing. And if you're going to help people that are running for office as an organizational leader or as a volunteer, you need to show up to this thing. People send me emails, talk to me over the phone, many who are running for office are thinking about it, and they're like, I don't have the time to attend this, I don't think I really need it. And that could not be further from the truth. Number one, when you do something for a living, or if you do something public, you really do need to equip yourself to do it well. I coach painting contractors, for example, for a living. I used to exclusively and only work on campaigns. But people will come to me in their painting businesses, and they think they got it all figured out. We spend thirty, forty, fifty minutes on the phone, and like, they're not doing the basics. They're not making much money, their profitability is low, the way they manage their business is poor. But until they have someone from the outside looking in to tell them that, they don't know it. Same thing with running for political office. You may think it's going to be turned out all super duper well, and you're going to do it perfectly without anyone who has ever actually had the experience of doing it multiple times on large scales properly. You can do it just as well, I'm here to tell you, you can't. And I've watched many, many candidates get their keisters handed to them over the years because they're just ignorant. Being around politics, participating in party events, even, even local grassroots groups, maybe having volunteered on a campaign, that has nothing to do with the professional education required to win an election and the resources that you need to win. So do go to ConservativeCandidatesAcademy.com. We're going to be covering everything from dealing with the hostile press, how to raise money for political office, general strategy and messaging, get-out-the-vote efforts, voter targeting, social media, direct mail, canvassing, how to challenge incumbents effectively, and more. Don't miss it, ConservativeCandidatesAcademy.com. Next story, eighteen-state coalition backs Tennessee in anti-drag law ruling appeal. Eighteen states have joined to file an amicus brief, brief, rather, supporting Tennessee in its appeal of a ruling on its drag show law. The amicus brief comes as Tennessee is appealing a ruling against the law to this U.S. Sixth Court of Appeals. The law was blocked by a judge in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Tennessee after it was contested by Friends of George's. South Carolina Attorney General Allen Wilson is leading the coalition and says, quote, "Protecting children from obscene and lewd behavior is not a new idea. We need to let kids be kids, and the state has legal authority to ensure the protection. I believe the court wrongly ruled against the law, and I'm happy to lead the coalition of support on the law in appeal." A federal judge ruled that the law to limit public drag show performances as an unconstitutional restriction on freedom of speech and ruled the restrictions were unconstitutional and vague. The law bans drag performances from public property and requires the performances to only take place in age-restricted venues. The state's amicus brief argues states do have the authority, and as well, I think they would, to restrict performances. The brief states, quote, "The district court disregarded decades of precedent that respects the role of legislatures and state legislatures in particular in shaping public policy. The Tennessee legislature did not act with an impermissible purpose, and the court's holding to the contrary undermines the basic principles of separation of powers. The judgment of the court should be reversed." There you have it, guys, listen, we need your support. I've been doing this, this October will be three years, three years, and it has been a long, difficult uphill journey. And the main and the biggest uphill obstacle we face is the lack of conservative participation financially. I know we have far more people that listen to our podcast and read our publication than donate. It is shamefully low, and everyone looks around and like, well, somebody else is going to do it. Yes, someone else is doing it, they are. It's called the left-leaning corporations. They're doing it because conservatives in this state have left a media and a political vacuum and the corporate America, which leans to the left and hates everything about you and what you stand for as a conservative Christian, they have filled that vacuum completely full to where there's barely any room for anybody else. And so we are the state's largest and only conservative news alternative, and if you want us to stay around, you must be the type of conservative Christian who puts your money where your mouth is. If you don't put your money where your mouth is, I just really doubt your sincerity. Guys, we need to come together financially as conservatives and support one another. And if you give to the Tennessee Conservative, go to TennesseeConservativeNews.com/support, we will send you this Stop Feeding the Rhinos bumper sticker, God knows they're fat enough already, Don't California My Tennessee bumper sticker. And if you give fifty dollars or more, or a recurring donation of ten dollars or more, we will send you these beverage heating and cooling devices, this proud Tennessee Conservative Tumblr. I think that's what we're on here, we may have, still have a few Stop Feeding the Rhinos out there. And we'll also send you this proud Tennessee Conservative koozie. And both of these will keep your beverages at the appropriate temperature. And if you give any amount, I'll also fail to mention that we will send you a directory of all your state reps and state senators that is also publicly available on the internet. But sometimes it's just a lot easier to get that stuff right in front of you in paper form. Now, we, 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 we also take checks in the mail to P O Box six two five, Signal Mountain, Tennessee, three seven three seven seven. That is P O Box six twenty-five, Signal Mountain, Tennessee, three seven three seven seven. Next story. Johnson City Medical Group Denies Medical Treatment to the Unvaccinated. Fantastic. Johnson City resident Kimberly Moser says that her family experienced vaccination discrimination from the very people who claimed to be committed to the well-being of children to, quote, "High-quality medical care for children," according to Johnson City Pediatrics' own Welcome booklet for parents. Moser says that her and her husband and her son refused medical treatment for COVID from clinics managed by the state of Franklin Healthcare Associations. The reason for this refusal is because both were unvaccinated. It doesn't seem to matter if you are vaccinated. It seems like you can still catch it and transmit it. It seems like that's kind of what it is. I have, I have previously caught COVID from someone who was like thoroughly and highly vaccinated, and that's who I caught it from. So, I mean, I'm talking about every booster that's come out, I don't know if they've missed a one, and that's the individual that, you know, trucked it along to me. And so I don't, it's just quite illogical, it's all tribalism, and it's all medical authoritarianism. She says her son, who was ten at the time, was seen by Johnson City Pediatrics through a telehealth visit for COVID. They refused to prescribe any medication for a sore throat and congested sinuses, and went as far as they could to deny recommendations for anything over the counter to help his recovery. Pharmacist Kurt Dearing said, quote, "It's almost impossible to find pediatric offices that will care for a child if they are not vaccinated, it's immoral. They make most of their profit off vaccines and vaccine bonuses." No, there would not be some kind of profit motive to keep Americans, Americans sick or to give them treatments they, they don't need. The medical profession never would do that, there's no history of that happening in the United States of America. And there's no history of the medical association being one of the largest, the medical profession in general, and AMA and all those folks, of being some of the largest and most influential lobbyist groups and political contributors in the Tennessee Legislature. Now, that, that would not happen either, right? They, they wouldn't be buying influence up in the legislature against the interest of Tennesseans. Politicians wouldn't allow that, so conservative as they are. A month later, quote, back to the story, Moser's husband tested positive and saw his physician at Blue Ridge Family Medical, another affiliate of SOFA, there who's offering a number of different options for treatment. However, those choices were revoked after the officer realized he had not been vaccinated for the virus. Moser states that her husband's breathing was impaired and his blood was clotting. Moser noted that her family was able to find a new healthcare provider in Genesis Healthcare who did not discriminate against her family's medical choices and who would give her husband the lung care he needed. If you have been discriminated against as an unvaccinated Tennessean or if your child has, please do email news@TennesseeConservativeNews.com, TennesseeConservativeNews.com. All right, let's finish up, this is the last story. Here we go. Tennessee GOP Leadership's Recent History of Censoring Citizens. This, this is the GOP, this is the Democrats, this is the Nazi Party, these aren't communists, these are GOP leaders, the same ones that locked, locked down the businesses, left the large corporations over, told us face it masks work, pushed ineffective vaccines regardless of the, the negative, you know, negative consequences, all the same people, right, most of them still in office. Over the past two years, the leaders of the Tennessee Republican Party have seemingly been on a mission to silence citizens. They were outwardly critical of their job performance, publicly questioned or expressed opinions about their policies, or simply wanted to practice their freedom as citizens of the volunteer state. Most recently, the House sign ban that came as part of the new House rules that were secretly passed in darkness, formed an ad hoc committee, et cetera, in Sexton's private conference room, no telling what else might go on in there. While the rules may have been put in place to aid with making Democrat lawmakers follow rules of decorum and keeping unruly protesters in check so the chamber could work more efficiently, they could have just as easily been used to silence lawmakers and session attendees that represent a larger portion of Tennessee voters, namely Republicans and Conservatives. During the 2023 regular session of the General Assembly, Representative Sam Whitson and Senator Richard Briggs sponsored legislation that could have been used to force news outlets, advocacy groups, companies, associations, clubs, and groups to register as political action committees and be subject to all the regulations thereof, just to shut them up. These people have such terrible voting records. They lie and lie and lie about everything they plan to do, and then they go up there and they do the exact opposite, primarily for political influence, PAC dollars, lobbyist dinners, et cetera. You know, committee, titles, moving up in the ranks, I mean, they'll throw, they'll throw their constituents under the bus all day long if it'll get some traction on the, on the political tires. Also, as we mentioned, Cameron Sexton McNally introduced in 2023 the legislation that conservatives believe was crafted in part to silence the grassroots to help ensure the reelection of Republican incumbents. The legislature that was touted as a transparency bill, a section added requirements for nonprofits to report expenses of more than five thousand dollars spent on communication with the image or name of a candidate. On them in the final sixty days before an election, the bill was passed and signed into law by Governor Lee. In September 2022, the Tennessee Registry of Election Finance decided to audit the campaign of former District Twenty-seven State Senate candidate Gary Humble, who lost to incumbent Jack Johnson by a narrow margin. Although there have been no tangible evidence presented or complaints filed, there are no complaints filed against Humble's campaign. The registry board member, Tom Law, was called for an investigation and just says, ah, where there's smoke, there's fire, let's investigate till we find something. Sounds real above board, doesn't it? Many conservatives believe the audit was initiated in an attempt to ensure political candidates, especially those that are from the grassroots, never again challenge Republican incumbents for their seat. That's what you get, that's where we are. That's what you get. That's where we are. That's where we are. We need new leadership. ConservativeCandidatesAcademy.com, proud sponsors of the Tennessee Conservative. So please, please, please do attend that training because, gosh, we could, I think a corpse would do better than these people. Couldn't do any worse. That's the news that you can use. Brandon Lewis here with the TenCon Big Seven. What's going on this weekend? Well, I did get a tad behind. As I mentioned, I was under the weather. I had to cancel, which just broke my heart, my speaking engagement at the McMen County Republican Women's Event. Hated that. That's the first time I've ever had to cancel an engagement. But buddy, I was still running a fever. Did not need to be around other humans and pass along what I had. And see, that's the other thing. All this COVID crap that went around for the last two or three years, completely wholly unnecessary. I'm as anti-everything as I can be, meaning I don't want to be told to put something on my face or in my body. Just let me handle my health decisions. I eat well. I work out. I exercise. I take my supplements. I'm in good shape, right? I take my health very seriously. I don't need overweight, out of shape politicians telling me what I do and don't need to do with my health. So when I got sick, what did I do? I'm supposed to be one of those radical, right-wing COVID deniers, right? I'm not a COVID denier. I've been, I've had it several times. The thing that I deny is the effectiveness of most of what is pushed versus just letting your immune system do what it would do naturally if, if you're healthy. And so what did Brandon Lewis do? When I caught a contagious disease, I stayed my ass at home. Until I was better. Then I went out and about, which is what every normal human being will do. And we don't need a bunch of laws and nonsense and shaming and BS to make it happen. But nonetheless, I didn't miss it. But I'm going to go back out there to do a redo, I think in November. I'm not sure. I have to look at my, my text messages. I'm a little bit behind in my communication. I got buried. So I hated that, but it was okay. We all hung out as a family. I caught up on a little rest. And it's all right, right? We're onward upward. So what's going on this weekend? Well, we have got folks staying over at the house tonight, having a sleepover. You know, got, got these kids. Kids want to get together and hang out. It's going to be a good time. And I'm just going to hang around the house tonight. I'm going to try to finish up some work here. I've got plenty of it to do. I've got a couple of appointments, which reminds me, I need to get on one right now. My mother, who has not been up here yet, is coming up from Alabama. So that should be fun. And my nephew may be coming with them. So that'll be a good, good time. And then, what is it, Saturday night, we're going to try to go to church. My, my daughter likes the six o'clock service because it is more geared for youth. And then I may or may not be going to a birthday dinner in Carter'sville, Georgia on Sunday for Bibby, who is the matriarch of the Fincher family and who is also my wife's grandmother. And then maybe that evening, I'm going to hang out with some friends. And then finally, on Monday, it is my intention to be out with a buddy on the lake, if I can get there, which I think I can. So that's what Brandon Lewis is going to be doing this weekend. Traditional Labor Day, friends and family, get out on the boat, have a good time, just red-blooded American activity. So I hope you and your family are looking forward to a fantastic Labor Day. Thank you for all that you do. It was your continued, constant, unyielding pressure that kept this recent special session from being far worse than what it could. And you, you had a tough job. You had to not only fight the Democrats, but your main battle was against people like Jeremy Phasen, William Lambeth, and, and Cameron Sexton. I mean, they were ready, willing, and able to do exactly the opposite of what conservatives want. And that's what your leadership looks like in this state. They don't give a rip about the constituency. It's like, whose boots can I lick to climb faster? We don't need, we don't need that. They got terrible records and it's time, it's time they went and did something else. Okay? It's time they went and did something else. It's time they went and found a business where they could, they could exclusively and only deliver the exact opposite of what the customer wants and still remain in business. And so far, the only business I know of like that is probably politics or public education. And so they, they need to move along to some other kind of, some other kind of venue. I do believe conservatism would be better for it. Brandon Lewis here, Tennessee Conservative News. Listen, you're about to be done, right? You're a podcast listener. As soon as this thing stops, I want you to give me a five-star review. Give me a five-star review just as soon as it stops and then email me. Let me know you did it. Brandon@tennesseconservativenews.com. Brandon@tennesseconservativenews.com. Give me that five-star review. We need it desperately so more people can find out the truth about what's going on in Tennessee. Until next time, guys. Love you. Mean it. Be good. Stay vigilant. It ain't over yet. We got lots of work to do this summer before it comes time for the special session in January. It takes a while to turn the tide, but I do feel like very often the tide is turning and it only turns with your help. And I need it. Brandon Lewis here, Tennessee Conservative News. Talk to you next week. See ya.